All right, well, welcome. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 24th, and I will call to order this regular meeting of the Ferndale School Board. To begin this evening, will everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before we proceed with the agenda for tonight's meeting, let me acknowledge that this ground on which the Ferndale School District sits is the traditional territory of the Lak- Lactamish people. And I invite you to join me in recognizing our Lummi friends and neighbors and their indigenous brothers and sisters as the original stewards of this place and also in respecting the enduring relationship that exists between them and this land. So, hi, Scott. As you know, November is Native American Heritage Month, and our district has honored this month in various ways. Oh, sorry, that was just in my head, top of my head. On behalf of the board, I also want to honor the important roles Native Americans have played and continue to play in our community, state, and nation. Later in the agenda, I will be calling on Jessie and Linda to lead the continuation of a discussion we started last July about making a land acknowledgement like the one I just read, a regular feature of the Ferndale School Board meetings. So the next item is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to propose any changes.
Melinda? I would like to take, uh, let's see, item 8.10, except October 2020 Fund Balance Financial Statements. I'd like to take it out of the consent agenda for discussion before we approve the consent agenda, please.
All right, we can request a discussion of any consent agenda item. We can also remove an item before we take action on the consent agenda as a whole. In this case, I don't know that we need to revise our meeting agenda, but rather, we can pause when we get to the consent agenda and have the discussion for this item. And if we decide we do not want to vote on item 8.1 this evening as it's written, we can pass, pass a motion at that time to remove it from the consent agenda. Is that okay? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda, knowing we will be pausing to discuss the consent agenda item that Melinda has identified?
I will make a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, knowing that we will pause before approve, before voting on the superintendent consent agenda to discuss point 8.10.
Okay. So it's been moved that we adopt the agenda, knowing that we'll be pausing to discuss item 8.10 at that time? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right. So moved. The next item is public comment. And during this time when we are conducting our meetings via video conferencing, we are accepting public comment through a portal on the district website or through email. Any comments we receive prior to the board meeting are being read aloud at the meeting. Any comments that come in through the chat feature during the board meeting will be reviewed and addressed after the meeting. So this time, we've received one public comment for tonight's meeting from John Stalsberry. He writes, "I think it is important to first look at the metrics for Ferndale School District regarding the increase in COVID-19 cases. Keeping schools open, even hybrid mode, while there is such a dramatic increase in cases here, is not the safest option for anyone." Since the question about county versus district metrics has come up several times before, I feel like, I feel confident responding to this part of Mr. Salisbury's comment by saying that one of our guiding principles is to follow the recommendations of the Waukam County Health Department. And we've been advised by the Health Department to use county numbers, not district-specific numbers, because the populations in individual school districts are too small to define an accurate trend, an accurate trend line. So we're working hard to be as consistent as possible, and rather than pick and choose which Health Department guidance we follow. So I want to remind you that Dr. Quinn writes answers to your questions received from the community during the month and posts those under the public comment item on Board Doc's agenda and also on the website. This question about county versus district metrics was included in Dr. Quinn's October responses. It's included again in the responses she posted for this month. The second part of Mr. Salisbury's comment about the safety of in-person learning will be addressed by our next agenda item. So that item is 4.01, an update on the reopening of schools. I know in-person learning has been a hot topic across the country the past two weeks. Dr. Quinn has informed the board of her recommendation that we continue the course we are currently on, but that we pause any explanation of our in-person learning until further notice. Any expense, sorry, any expansion of our in-person learning until further notice. So at this time, I will call on Dr. Quinn and her team to share their research and rationale.
Thank you, Andrew. This, this whole topic, of course, is top of mind every day for us. Just as a reminder, we have students at the, at our elementary level coming to school in the hybrid model. A, a two days, half of them coming Monday and Tuesday, half of them coming Thursday and Friday, except this week, where half came Monday and half came Tuesday, because there is no Thursday and Friday. We've also got some of our, our students with IEPs coming in. We've got students in our safe remote sites. We are tracking the metrics very carefully, but we, when we met with the Waukam Health Department last week and the other superintendents in Waukam County, the Health Department advised us that our best course of action for right now would be to hold our course while maintaining all of our safety precautions, hold our course, but put a pause on expanding anything further that, bringing back any additional kids. So you know, the last time we talked to you, we were talking about bringing back some kids who are particularly kids who are struggling at the secondary level for some targeted support in academic areas and also trying to expand some social activities for kids. So that's where we are now. Monday morning, we, we meet on Mondays, and Monday morning, our meeting was dominated with the conversation about what we're doing in response to the numbers. I know you've seen Dr. Stern's latest guidance, where they're revising those metrics, and they're doing that not, they're doing that based on science. They're doing that based on the fact that even while the virus, the number, virus, number of cases is going up in, both in Washington and across the state and, and actually the country, and I've heard outside the country, the research is showing that, that in elementary schools, transmission of the virus is very low when masks are worn and the distancing protocols are followed. So we, Monday morning, to make sure, we serve, we surveyed all of the other Waukam County school districts. They are also holding with what they're doing currently and putting a pause on expansion. Now, what we're doing currently differs from district to district. Most of us have, just have elementary schools back in a hybrid model, but Lyndon and Nuxack are also serving their secondary students. And Bellingham is only serving part of their elementary. So there is some variation, but all of us are agreed and are following that recommendation that we continue. Our, um, one of the things that we did decide this week is that we know, we know, we were very sensitive and also empathetic with the anxiety and fear. And we know that people are worrying, and when they don't know, it's easy for rumors to fill in, you know, when a lack of information, it's easy for people to fill in things or wonder. And so we decided that internally, at least, that's what we're doing now. We are, we're sending out a report every day that lets people know what the county rate has done, how many cases we, how many, they're not cases, but how many symptoms we've investigated in our school district? Because we investigate any rumor, any, I hate to say every sneeze, but almost, we're investigating what we hear. And then also whether or not there have been confirmed cases among our students or staff. And we're letting people know when there are. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk a little bit more about, about the metrics and some of the work that he and his team are doing.
I think you plowed most of the ground there, Linda. So, yeah, there's been two main changes since we talked about the, this, at our last meeting. The first one is the rise in the county numbers. And through the, the whole of the experience that we'd had since we opened school, you know, we'd been sitting there between that 25 and 75 that we educated folks on. The most current numbers that are available right now have the county number at 130. It has been as high as 142 and a half within, probably about a week and a half ago. It shows a little bit of a downturn right now, but I don't know if that's just because of, of incomplete data. The, what, where we get that from the Waukam County Health Department, and they, they track the rate and, and we check it. I say I check it daily. I wished I only checked it once a day, but I find myself looking at it frequently during the day, seeing if it's been updated, because I know other people are. The other change is the, the new information that we have available. We talked a little bit about the Institute for Disease Modeling and their report that came out and showed frankly that, that hybrid is just as safe as all remote learning if you do it the way we're doing it with attestations and, you know, masks and distancing. And when you, you know, you remove symptomatic folks right away. We spent quite a bit of time with our, in our FEA meeting this afternoon, talking about exactly these things and what it means right now. And the other thing that is, is changing and is causing some anxiety is the, the numbers at 25 to 75 that we all got really comfortable with. We all had it memorized. We weren't wondering about it. Were probably the best numbers when they were given to us, but more information is changing that. And with the proper precautions, those numbers don't seem to be very close to right. And that's just, that's uncomfortable. And especially, I think especially when though that comes at exactly the same time as the numbers are going up. It, it's, it's leading to some anxiety. So we've been trying to fight that. Well, and then you have Thanksgiving and, and what folks are afraid that other folks might be doing, I think, is, is adding to it as well. We, we're asking principals to make sure that they are given an avenue to talk with their staff, both, you know, in an in-person way and at staff meetings. Linda mentioned I'm doing a daily update. I think it was in the, the communication that Linda sent out this week as well, those county numbers. And then the other three pieces that come out of that, which are the number of people that we have tracked because they were symptomatic, the number of positive, or people who are positive associated with the school, that's either a student or a staff member. And then any possible cases where there could have been transmission at, at school, which is identified to somebody that in the 48 hours before their test or before they became symptomatic, whichever one was earlier, was on a campus where they would have been, other people could have been exposed. To do that, we use these forms, and we get one of them each time. These are today's. I haven't been through them all. We'll be doing that after the meeting tonight. You, you see a number on that. Yesterday, we, we tracked 31, which sounds like a lot, but that's just three per school if, if they were divided evenly among our 10 schools. It, it happens. If you've ever spent any time in an elementary school, you know that people are symptomatic. They go through the health room. The difference is now that they, they go home and, and we, we track, or, you know, how long did these symptoms last? What were the symptoms? In some cases, we, we require testing or a period of time that they're not in school in order to ensure that we're not transmitting. And frankly, it's working. It's working really well. We do not have a single case at this point where we believe that somebody who was positive during their contagious period was on one of our campuses, not a student, not a staff member. I can't tell you it's not going to happen. In fact, I, if we're being completely just open, I believe it is going to happen at some point. However, we are minimizing it to the, the point that I think can reasonably be done. The, the other thing we've done to reduce anxiety is, is Linda's letter that she wrote out to the whole staff. I've gotten several comments about how it made people feel better. I think the, the complete explanation, the, the the context around what's going on, I think, was important, and it made a lot of people feel better. Another thing we're doing is we're meeting very regularly with all of our labor groups. To, like I said, today, we were talking with, with FEA. And, and I just have to pause here and say that I meet with the county HR folks once a week, and I hear over and over again how difficult things are. And I have to say that, and I hate to say it because it's like a knock on wood thing, but it has been not that way here. Our labor groups, all of them, have been in our corner. Their question is, how do we make this work? Not can we make this work? The, the cooperation has been absolutely fundamental to us having a successful opening. We have anxiety. We have a lot of anxiety. But we've got everybody kind of pulling in the same direction, trying to take care of it, not trying to undermine because of that anxiety. It's made, it made a huge difference. Also sent out some guidance to staff this week about the, the request to not travel. Please, please don't. And, and then following Thanksgiving, I'm going to send something out, because we're not naive. We know that some people will have, but there's some things we can do to mitigate the, the effects of that. And so I'll be sending that out after Thanksgiving. Really, what we're trying to do is create just an open give and take with our, with our staff. Part of it is them trusting us to, to do these forms, to track down every concern, whether it's a rumor, whether it's a kid we actually have in the school. And then I think the idea to report those and get that out to the, the whole staff has been, has been pretty valuable. You know, I, I know it's an anxious time. It is for, for our families. It is for our staff. And we probably transfer that on to our kids more than we want to. But through communication, education, you know, honestly, we're, we're getting through it together as smoothly as I guess I, I could have hoped that we, they would at this time. So.
Kelly, did you want to add anything?
Um, I would like to add, absolutely. But I will say that Linda and John, you both did a very thorough job. So I will follow up with just a, a couple of things. We do continue to work closely with our different groups. And that includes elementary principals, that includes our secondary staff, our stakeholders. And it's really important that we continue to have these check-ins so we can factor in those perspectives as we're continuing to have these conversations. And we meet regularly with teacher leaders as well. And we're continuing to refine kind of what our practices are. And as we're getting further and further into this, we're starting to recognize what, what systems are working well and what systems continue to need to be refined a little further. Right now, we're trying to work out some attendance issues, but those are things that we'll take care of, then we'll get resolved. But it's just these ongoing conversations to identify and recognize and rectify these situations that are so important in order to alleviate some of those concerns that our, our friends here have mentioned. A common theme in these communications that we are having with these stakeholders is their genuine joy to have kids back in the classrooms. People are just so happy to have kids there. And so that's just beautiful to see. But as Linda shared, there is a genuine fear and concern associated with the rise in COVID cases throughout our county. And what I will say is, as we've continued to check in with principals and staff, even this evening, when John was talking about labor management, just how appreciative our folks are with the transparency in the communication that we are sending out. You know, as John mentioned, Linda's letter, and then the COVID-related metrics that John has started sending out as well. And so it's just been very appreciated by our school community, this ongoing communication, a genuine concern that we've, Lyndon and John both mentioned as well, is the Thanksgiving approaching. And, and we're understanding, recognize that, and we're going to continue to work collaboratively, as John said, to use some strategies to mitigate those effects. But overall, our staff is working extremely hard to meet the needs of our students and really some challenging circumstances with the safety measures that we have in, in our classrooms. But they're being as creative as ever, supportive, and they're working so hard to do that. So we continue to be really grateful and appreciative of the efforts of our folks and recognize that there continue to be challenges associated with that that we're working through with them.
Okay.
Well, thanks. Following you three makes, makes it very easy. As Linda, Kelly, and John have explained, we are following closely the recommendations, completely following the recommendations of the Health Department. And then one area that has, has had an impact is in our secondary planning. As you know, we've been working really hard to try and find ways to bring our secondary students into the building for in-person support. But with the Health Department's recommendations, we have followed those and put a pause on adding more students into our buildings at this time. So what we're in the process of doing now is taking what we had planned to do for that intentionality and that truly targeted support and create that online. So taking the plans that we had made to go in person to, back to remote for that identified group of kiddos. The one area where we have really had to roll back, again, following the guidelines, is in secondary athletics. We pull back on any inside activities. So that means our drama production is on hold right now. Any in-person, inside-building practices are paused and not being held at the moment. And any athletic practices are in groups of no more than five students, fully masked, and following the recommendations at that time, and all outdoors. So very, very small groups, very limited, and not in an indoor facility. So that's, I know, really disappointing for a lot of our kids, families, coaches, our theater leaders. And again, taking those, and really, the middle and the high schools have done a wonderful job on trying to boost their online activity and club opportunities for students. And really, a lot of our teachers have really stepped up and are offering clubs remotely. And last Wednesday, the high school ran a kind of a workshop where students were able to select, and Avni and Colin might talk about this if they participated, but there were lots of different workshop opportunities, things from quilting and guest speakers, and, and students could sign up for the things that interested them and then attend those presentations and those workshops. And great opportunity for our kiddos to engage with our staff on more of a personal level and for our staff to share things that they're passionate about, that our kids might not have known before, that certain teachers are quilters or artists or have passions for all sorts of different things. So just trying to be really creative on how we can increase those opportunities online.
So thank you, board members. We've talked a lot. What are your questions, comments?
Um, I just have a question. Like, I'm just like, understand that the answer to this could be obviously like circumstantial about what happens at that time. I'm just wondering, so obviously, we have Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Eve, and like winter break coming up. What happens if the, like, let's say, when students are going to be brought back in? I think January 3rd, I'm not sure. What happens, like, if the COVID rate does like skyrocket during that time period?
Then the, the Health Department has told us that they will, they monitor obviously closely, that they might, may advise us that we still have to remain on pause or even roll back what we're currently doing. And they also will make sure that if we do, John just said, we haven't had a positive case in our schools or in one of our classrooms. If that happens, we will, we will shut down that classroom. You know, if there's, we will have, you know, with the, we will work with the Health Department to do that. So you're right, exactly right, Avni, very circumstantial. We'll see what happens.
All right, thank you.
I have a question related to what Avni was saying. I mean, you were saying how we got so comfortable with the 25 to 75 per hundred thousand. I listened to a podcast this morning, and they had, had latched on to a number of no more than 3% positive and then went over it and so closed schools down. Has the Health Department given you a new, like, number to watch? Or are they keeping that open, knowing that this is science and things change? What we know and what they say?
They did suggest a number, but they told us that, and supposedly, the decision tree is, well, not supposedly, the decision tree is in the process of being revised. We thought we might have it now, but we understand now we probably won't have it in January. So what I'm telling you is what the conversation has been, but what's not necessarily what's going to be on there. But they were talking about a number closer to 200 as a, a trigger. But I think there's also, we may see something very different come out. I think there's also the realization that as we learn more, we can decide that a certain, that, that there, that a certain activity might be okay, whereas another activity, it doesn't have to be shut everything down.
It almost seems like having different numbers for elementary, middle school, and high school, depending on how the transmission is shown.
Well, Dr. Stern talked about the fact that we may see a graduated, at least a two-level, elementary and secondary because of the cohorting ability at the elementary and because of, of the science that elementary students are not transmitting the disease as much as secondary students. So yes, they are talking, but I don't, there is no new number that's, that's been finalized to replace the 25 to 75.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board? All right, well, thank you, executive team. I know the, oh, yes. Okay.
Leanne, do you have one?
Yeah.
You go first, and then I'll go after.
Okay, thanks. Um, I just, yeah, the anxiety and the stress and trying to facilitate kids' learning and feel safe. And John, thank you for saying that things are going well in your conversations with the, with the union groups. I just feel for them, and I just, they are my heroes at this moment, that they're in the classroom and they're doing what they're doing, because we know those children need to be there. And it's very sad to think that those middle school kiddos, I'm thinking about the sixth graders. It's like, oh, please, can we get those sixth graders in? So anyway, thank you for the work you guys are doing around this. And, and I, I still think we've done the impossible at this moment, and it's amazing.
My next comment is kind of really related to what Leanne just said. I think that our union groups, working well with the union groups is really dependent on I think that our union groups, working well with the union groups is really dependent on how safe they feel. And I think that, you know, we've had it smooth now, really shows the confidence that they have in our district in taking care of them and creating a safe work environment. So I totally commend you. I think these daily reports are an awesome idea. If I were a teacher, I would want to have that transparency as well. The one thing I was thinking when you were giving your presentation and you held up the papers of today, that's a lot of work and that's just today. So my question is, after Thanksgiving, if those numbers skyrocket, if things don't go how we would want them to go, and of course, we all want them to go down. If they don't go that way, how sustainable for the workload of that contact tracing and that investigation that you've been doing? What's your, your group that's, do you have enough manpower to do this and for how long?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty insightful. I will say that our nurses are stretched as, about as thin as we can because we've actually done this short, one staff member. We just brought on this week a nurse that replaced one that wasn't able to work during, during the pandemic. And frankly, I worry about them. They are making so many phone calls because each one of those represent communication with, with the office, with the parents, sometimes with the kids. Sometimes, I mean, I do the communication with the Health Department myself, but because they want a single source of, of questions coming from the district. But they are, they are stretched very thin during this time.
Melinda, I would say this, even if we have to pull, even if we have to pull people off other things, we are not going to let down on that part of this operation until we have, until we have to close, close down. Because we will not, and I want, I want every teacher and every parent who thinks something is happening or going on to feel comfortable telling us so we can follow up. I, you know, and so right now, John's got, John's crew is stretched pretty thin, but we're not going to let them fail to be able to do this as long as we stay open. If it means that the rest of us are jumping in and pulling people off other things. So I, I think people, I, I, you know, I, I feel very anxious. I have anxiety. I mean, this is really hard. And so I'm very empathetic with our teachers and staff. And I'm not anxious so much about getting COVID as I am about making the wrong decision. But when we talk to the Health Department and one of the, you said it, Leanne, our kids need to be in school, but when John talked about the modeling on remote, almost, I mean, hybrid, almost as safe or as safe as remote, it's because we are doing all of this. And if we, if we put those kids, if we just, you know, whiplash parents around, they have to do things for childcare that may not even fit their safety guy. I mean, that you just, we're putting parents in such a difficult situation too. So we're trying to be as consistent as we can to take care of our families. And we're always allowing that option for people to choose not to send their kids. It's our teachers that, like you said, are the real heroes here.
I really appreciate that commitment. We will not let this slide.
No.
Yes, we will keep it on it.
Yep, this is the number one priority. So other things may slide. You might not get a letter from me. You might, but you, we are not going to, when, when we can't do that anymore, then we really will have to close.
Other comments? So thank you, executive team, for your reports. I want to, these are definitely challenging times. I would like to applaud your transparency and urge you to continue to safeguard the health of our students and our staff. To the teachers and the unions, thank you for hanging with us and being there every day for the kids. I think that's pretty incredible. I also want to ask our community to help us keep our schools open by following the governor's directives for this holiday weekend. So let's keep our schools open. All right, the next item is 5.01, and this has become a standing topic on all of our school board business meeting. It's a report on our capital bonds project. And so as usual, I will turn it over to Mr. Dibok to share any updates related to our bond policies, our bond projects.
Thank you, Mr. Cor. So the, just real quick, as of, for those of you, hopefully everybody had a chance to see the bond update last week. Or I think it was last week that had the photos of the secure vestibule projects. Those are completed and I've got to say they look pretty fantastic. So most of the, most of the buildings look as though they've always been that way. And some of the more challenging schools like Central, very, very hard to come up with the design that works there. I think turned out really well and everybody that's seen it has been very complimentary about the way that turned out. So kudos to the team at Dykman that did the design work on that and Tiger Construction, who did a wonderful job completing the projects and really, really went out of their way to make sure they turned out well. So the high school project is kind of the, the main, the main focus of the, of the work. And we reached a major milestone here recently and got our design, our drawing set and turned in for permit review, permit approval, which is a pretty standard part of the construction process and really not particularly noteworthy, other than the fact that we did in three and a half months what it normally takes six. So very early on in the process, when we knew, we needed to maximize our dollars and squeeze every, every nickel we could out of the project. There was a conscious decision made by the design team. So the architects, the engineers, and our construction management company. So remember, we're doing the GCCM. This is one of the major advantages of GCCM. We've got the contractor at the table with the architect going through the design. So they decided early on that we needed to accelerate the design process in order to get our bid documents out at the most favorable time of the year, when the contractors are typically a little more aggressive in terms of bidding around price. So we will be out to bid mid-January with the primary bid package on the high school. And like I said, that typically, the contractors are a little hungry. They want to get some work on the books, so they're a little more aggressive with their bid packaging, bid pricing. So that should save us quite a lot of money. Little differences make a big difference on a project this size. So Tim Jewitt from Dykman, actually talking to the high school staff today as he was presenting the, the plan, the kind of the, the design of the plans to the high school staff and walking them through the design process, said that he expects that going out to bid at this time of the year will actually deliver a lot more value, which means that they're hoping to deliver the full scope, which means the bid alternates. So they're hoping that, that by being out early, they're actually going to be able to deliver on most, if not all, of the alternates as within our budget as part of the, of the, the design work. So very exciting that they were able to do that. It's a pretty heroic effort on their part, especially considering they're doing this all via distance and computer interfaces. They're not being able to meet in person and do the work that they normally do with the meetings with all the engineers and consultants and everybody's working independently and coordinating via Zoom and Microsoft Teams and all their electronic coordination. So pretty fantastic effort on, on part of the architects and the, and the whole design team. So I wanted to make sure we recognize that and appreciate the, the pretty extraordinary effort that led us to this point. So like I mentioned, the Dykman team, primarily Tim was presenting at the, at the high school today. So walked the entire staff through the, through the design, kind of the layout of the rooms, the layout of the building, walked through some of the, the main design features of the site. And then in the next, I think, next week, week after, they're actually having a series of meetings with all of the different departments, where they're actually meeting in small groups and going, going through the specific details of their spaces. So they'll walk through the CTE spaces with the CTE teachers, the science labs with the science teachers, and so on. So they'll actually, all of the, all of the, the staff will have a chance to go through their particular workspaces and, and see what's been designed. And then also get the opportunity to weigh in on some of the decisions yet to be made around casework and some of the specific details of the finishes and things in the rooms. Once that happens, then we are also, we have got scheduled a, a similar meeting that took place today with the high school staff with the public. So we are going to, on December 9th, make sure I got that right, December 9th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., we're going to have a Zoom webinar, much like this, where we have the team from Dykman actually do the same walkthrough, the same presentation for the public. So anyone out there in the community that wants to get a tour kind of of the, of the plans, the design for the high school, will have an opportunity to log in and be walked through the site plan, the building layout, some of the key design features, thinking that went into the, into the building and be able to, you know, submit some questions via chat or email and get a chance to see what their, what their taxpayer, what their dollars are paying for. So hopefully that was coherent enough to give you a good update. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board, questions?
So we're calling it a community town hall, but it'll be a webinar style. And we'll, Kelly and I will be getting advertising out about that next week. We decided after Thanksgiving. So that's December 9th.
Will, will there be invitations or a limit or number of people?
We're going to use the webinar feature. So you people, the one way that we were going to use will allow in up to 500 people. So if we have more than 500, Kevin will do it again.
Sounds good. Hopefully we have more than 500.
Yeah, seriously.
So we, yep, Mark and I just talked about that. That's.
It won't be like the Facebook Live format. It's going to be more like this format.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
We have a recording. We can put.
We will, we will do a recording, but it will be more like this format. Yes.
Will people be able to ask questions?
In the chat.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll figure out how to moderate that so that they can be, we can bring those up as they're being asked. It's hard to be the speaker and moderate the chat, but we'll, yeah, we'll work on that.
Kelly does a good job of that.
She does.
I know. But I told you she might not even have to do this one.
She might want to, though.
I can do it.
Good attitude, Kelly. Thank you.
Other questions for Mark?
Do you know Smacky is going to have his own classroom?
Yes.
And counselors?
The, the, yeah, the Counseling Center, although the counselors have a, have an office.
Okay, so if anybody from the community wants to join and look at that, will they be able to see his room?
Well, they'll, they'll point out where it is.
Yeah.
There's still plans, Jesse. It's still good plans. But yeah, I've seen where it is.
Okay.
Corner on the second floor. I mean, I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to know in case they ask.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, Mark. And of course, you can find additional information about the bond and the work of the Bond Oversight Committee on the district website. And in addition, Dr. Quinn does a weekly update every Friday. This week's was number 86. And you can sign up to have those sent directly to your email. So just let us know if you'd like to join that mailing list. So the next item on the agenda is 5.02. It's a continuation of the discussion we began last July about adding a land acknowledgement to our school board meetings.
Oh.
So at the July meeting, Linda and Jesse agreed to do some additional research in cooperation with officials from the Lummy Nation. And then at our August meeting, they reported on a suggested process on moving forward. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse and Dr. Quinn for the developments on this topic.
Dr. Quinn?
I think Dr. Quinn is frozen.
Is she right now? Yes.
So we're still working on that. I've worked for, with a couple of people in the administration and we're narrowing it down. We've got a couple ideas. The administration is working on the wording as well as some kind of a ceremony or whatever. But we haven't decided that yet. And that's what Linda was going to be working on, how we're going to proceed with all the information that we're gathering. And we have Ted, who's the chairperson of our Lummy Language, working on getting flags and that type of stuff so we can have them at each school and as well as the administration office. And we want to take those and combine both of them with the land acknowledgement as well. But we're, we're throwing back and forth through email, the wording and stuff. We haven't really nailed it down. And Linda kind of started spearheading this. Hopefully she would get more information when we can move forward. And that's as far as we've gotten.
Okay, Linda, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
Kelly left.
There she is.
Take my mask off for a minute. Sorry about that. My computer is. I didn't hear everything that Jesse said, but we're, we're still working. I have a message into Ted. This is a time that I wanted to mention to all of you that we have a tentative time scheduled for a joint Lummy Nation School Board meeting. And we might, I'm, I have a planning meeting for that with Jana and Bernie next week. And so I am, I, maybe that might even be a time to bring this up also. And I think we're on for the hour before your December School Board meeting. So that would be the 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock hour on December 15th. The Lummy Nations Board's regular meeting is on the 14th. And we've, I don't know, we flipped a coin. Anyway, we won. It's on our night, I guess. And so they will join us and I got to figure out the logistics of that. But that might be another time that we could talk about this. And it's also not too soon to start thinking about Treaty Day, which is in January. It's hard to believe we're almost there as well. Yep, that's all.
Yeah. I'm, I was just going to say with Indigenous Month, the November Heritage Month, that's what I sent out was the treaty, copy of the treaty, and also the video that explains more about it. So I hope you got to see that.
And if you've been watching our Facebook page, we've been, Kelly's been doing a daily post for Native American Heritage Month. So anyway, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. Very good job too, I must say. I enjoy reading those.
All right. Well, thank you, Jesse and Linda, for. All right. Well, thank you, Jesse and Linda, for that update. We'll look forward to our meeting with our colleagues from the Lummy Nation Education Board next month. Oh, I'm sorry, Leanne.
Okay.
Got to be faster.
I know. Processing, slow processor. I am thrilled to hear about the flags. That was part of the conversation on some of the WASDA sessions that I was on. One in particular talked about, and I want to say maybe the Thurston School District, I probably shouldn't say for sure, but just has gone through a process and now flies the flag of the nation where their lands are. So I am, I am thrilled that that's part of this process. Thank you.
And Leanne, they've actually been ordered for a while and should have been here for November, but they came in the wrong colors. And so Ted sent them back. It was a printing error. So anyway, our goal was to have them for Native American Heritage Month, but you know, we'll, we'll flex.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'm gonna go try.
All right, then, moving on. So the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for us to reflect and report on our experiences at this year's virtual WASDA conference, which was last week. So I'm going to open the floor up to any of my fellow board members who want to begin the discussion. So board?
I know I want to talk. I don't have to go first, but
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
I wanted you to go first, Leanne.
So I, within the last month, I've attended two virtual conferences. And the first one I attended was an adult learning conference, and I thought these guys are going to nail it. It's going to be spot on. It's adult learning. They've got this. It was horrible. It was horrible. And I was a little bit dreading this one last week because of that experience. And then the WASDA conference came along and and I started with the pre-session and I was kicking myself because I thought, I don't know why I added a day to this. Pre-session, I did the equity one was fabulous. I am hoping they release the student portion of that. Was so powerful and so moving. That the whole day was was really incredible. The keynotes, others might want to talk about them. They were all really good. My takeaways from the three days that our equity work has to continue and has to continue focused. And I know we're doing that. I know COVID has brought this up and I and I know we're doing that, but a piece that I hadn't keyed into much before was the importance of student voice in that equity work and really centering our equity work around student voice. And a number of districts talked about the listening sessions they've done with their middle school and high school and even their elementary students, letting the students pick the topic and set the tone and listening to what they have to say. The other piece where they've brought in students is reviewing policy and having students look at policy through their eyes and how they interpret it. And so much of our policy is about them. And so instead of always doing it to them, to you guys, having them be at the table with us when we discuss those policies. I was, I was really excited about all of that. It just, it, it was, it was just very affirming and invigorating. I, the ones I watched in particular, I watched Arlington's Journey. I watched Clover Park, both very good. Quincy talked about developing their race and equity policy. And they said when they started that process, and I know we've talked about this, they thought a couple months, they'll work through it and we'll have the policy. No, it's been a multi-year process and their session, they walk through what happened at each stage in that process. So I, I know we have talked about doing a race and equity policy. I hope we can get started on it, but I don't know who will be here when we finish it because it is a multi-year process. So I think those were the highlights for me. I missed being with you guys and being able to process and talk about it in the moment. But I will say for a virtual conference, I was really impressed.
I would agree with Leanne that I was dreading the, I was not looking forward to the conference because I sit here at my desk and pretty much don't get up except for lunchtime when I work. And I was thinking that that was the same way it was going to be for the conference and to take a couple of days vacation so that I could do that was like not exciting. But I did attend a few conferences where you can watch them and I could move around the house and do stuff. So that was good. But I also attended on, it's, it's not as interesting maybe to me as a board member, but it is definitely necessary to me as a board member. I attended three, three-hour interactive sessions on school district budgeting. So woo-hoo, yes, Mark. Got my email on Sunday as I practiced my new skills. So I've got all sorts of, I can actually read what those four-digit revenue codes are and the, you know, what's the difference between an activity and a program? Reading the budget and really being able to know where the money comes from and where it goes to. It's not that I think I needed that because there's something to be found, not at all. It's just I want to, as a school board member for Ferndale School District, know what the heck is in this thing and know how to ask intelligent questions about it. So that was very, very helpful. It was, the school board members will know, but they're called onboard. It's a learning system that WASDA has developed the last few years. I've done a bunch of them. So far, they're pretty much all in the finance and school budgeting. They'll start branching out to other topics. But very, very, very useful. One of them was just deciphering a school budget. The one in the middle, I can't remember the name of it. Oh, it was something about looking at the financial health indicators for your school district, which can all be found on the OSBI website for the public. But why they use those as health indicators, what they mean, what sort of context you need to look at them in, that was really helpful. And I have to say that good job, Mark, because our financial and health indicators are very good, not perfect. I don't know if anybody in the States is perfect, but very, very good. And then the last one was vision-aligned budgeting, which then brings your budget in line with what your vision is. And if our vision is equity for students, how do we create a budget that speaks to what our vision is? So we can bring it all together. But yeah, that's what I, that's what I did.
Thank you.
So I also attended some of the sessions and, okay, they're always so enriching and empowering to me. But I'm also, if I'm correct, we got to see an FHS senior perform, Josiah Aho, I think so. Great. He always does. Um, yeah. And first I went to the one that was about pursuing equity and culturally responsible practices in Arlington. And Ms. Riddle, I agree with you. It was honestly amazing. And they talked about how they have respect teams at the elementaries, middle schools and high school. And I thought that was a really great takeaway and it sounded really cool. And those respect teams also create joint assemblies for social justice, equity and inclusion. And I thought that was a really, really great idea. And they also, all the respect teams hold a march each year, if I heard correct. I don't know. I took notes. Um, and anytime like a community incident happens, they provide healing after the incident. And it was just really great. And then I also went to one about like social emotional needs and learned a little bit about that and how other schools and districts are going about that. I also went to the after-hours school board student rep hangout, and that was really cool, being able to talk to people from other school boards. Also up there, sorry, one second. All right. I hope I didn't see my pink pajama pants because those, okay, I'm sorry. I'm okay. The after-hours school board student rep hangout was honestly so fun. And I got to tell other like schools, student board representatives about like ideas that I have for the board that I haven't like brought up yet, but I hopefully will soon. And also I heard someone, a girl, I think she's from the Olympia School District, not sure. But she spoke about how they're creating committees this year about racial equity, like they're creating specific racial equity committees. And I also thought that was really cool. Yeah, I don't know. It was just, it was great. And I did miss going to the in-person conference because you create a lot of connections with other like students from school boards there. But yeah, I'm missing you guys there, but I hope you guys still liked it.
Hello?
Yeah, Kong, hi.
Hi, sorry I was late. My computer was updating. So, but on the day on Thursday, I texted Dr. Linda because I was so confused if I was supposed to like stay there for like the whole day. So so I guess I was not supposed to. So I went to the afternoon conference or the the two-hour morning breakout. I think that was, I stayed there for the two hours. First, I want to say that the, the conference or like the equity about the history stuff was really enlightening. Like, it's like kind of touched me personally because like I'm an immigrant from Vietnam. I dealt with like lots of sorts of discriminations, but like after learning about it more, I feel like, because like usually when I'm at school or somewhere, lots of people just know me for like who I am, but like sometime like when I'm like outside, it's not like discrimination, but like there's a lot of like judgment. I don't know. But I've learned a lot about like the policies and things. Afterward, I went to the awards. I thought all of the students performing was wonderful because it's like, it's felt like I was back at school again somewhat. So that was a good. I also went to the cybersecurity sections, I think that was. They talk about how safety issues was like online stuff, which I thought was really good because like nowadays COVID and everyone was like online. It's a good section to like, like good thing to think about. Was there anything else I wrote down here? Oh, and everyone on the chat seemed really excited. Yeah. Yeah, that's all I have. Oh, and I also went to a lot of like budgeting issues, which some of them I don't understand.
Well, you're not alone there.
We can chat. I can, I can, yeah. Well, I guess no more than two of us at a time, but I, I got some budgeting skills now, Kong. We can, we can share.
Kong is so conscientious. He just wanted to make sure that he could miss a class or I told him that I'd cover him if he missed a class. Go to a class. So, yeah. Little different this year.
Other things to share? I, I, I've watched a couple of the equity ones, which always leads me to think as much as we do, there's so much left to do. And so that's important. And I've also, I went to a couple of the budgeting ones and I'm always struck by how I pick up things every time I listen to those. I feel like WASDA has really stepped up the, their game on some of these topics. And so I was impressed how they pulled this off this time. One thing I haven't looked at, but Leanne, do you know if we're able to watch the, the session from Wednesday?
Oh, Wednesday. Now that's a good question because that was an extra.
Yeah.
I have, I, I've asked and I know others have asked if it's all recorded. So I think it's a question to be asked and I'm, I'm hoping at least the student piece is available to all of us because I think it was so powerful. But the whole, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I didn't go to the Wednesday course. So I was just curious if it was going to be available.
I, I have access to it because I had accidentally said, yes, I wanted signed up for it, not knowing it was on Wednesday, but then couldn't get the day off work. But now I can watch all of the videos. So
good.
But and then the ones from the Thursday and Friday, everything that was recorded, we have until like July something or something that we can go in and and watch those. And you can put a little star next to the ones you've watched. Work my way through them all at some point.
What, what, what wasn't recorded? So the district elections was, I don't believe it was recorded. That happened on Thursday night. And then Friday, the Equity and Access Caucus happened and that one was also not recorded.
Other comments to share? I, I did miss being there with everyone and having our time together, but understandably so.
I miss being able to hang out all by myself in a hotel room with like yeah, but
Sure.
Oh, well.
Next year.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Well, I think as Leanne said, I think it was well done. I too miss being there with everyone and and when it's in a virtual format, I find that life interferes with the virtual format. I've been watching sessions between eleven and twelve at night, which is convenient. Most of them didn't happen at that time. So that works for my schedule, but
Yeah.
they've all been good and and they, they did a good job as far as the recording and it is nice having them available because we all know the, the challenge of when two sessions were happening at the same time that you wanted to attend both. So in this case, we can.
And, you know, I can't remember, but did a local school district get an award? Linda?
Yes, you were one of ten school districts that was a Board of Distinction this year. So one of twenty-five, excuse me, about, there were about twelve of them in the middle category. But yes, well, congratulations, board.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's great.
My mother heard about that a couple of days beforehand and sent me congratulations. Other people know too.
Yep.
Well, any other comments before we go on? Well, you know, although the virtual conference didn't provide an opportunity for us to get together as we normally would and learn with each other. And I definitely miss that. It does have its advantages. So the main one is that, as we said, we can access this, you know, at a future date and and watch things again. So I'd like to suggest that we spend some time in either tonight or at a future board meeting and identify some of the sessions that we would like to be sure we as a total board look at and then discuss. Because we have access to it and we can do that. And so I don't know if folks are prepared to do that tonight, or if you just want to keep that in, in, you know, in the back of your mind, and then we can identify those sessions and then have a study session or something where we talk about those particular sessions.
The other session that I didn't mention, but I'm going to go back and watch again because I did get distracted during part of it was the North Shoreage School District, and it had to do with courageous conversations. And the process that they went through, why they came to the conclusion that it would be good for, as a board, they did some professional development around having courageous conversations. And it really helped with their interactions with the public and their interactions with each other. And I want to go back in and watch it again because I think it has a lot of potential for learning for me anyway.
Okay. So do you guys want to put this on a future agenda item to identify those? And once we've had a chance to settle in and take a look back over the agenda and then we can pick some of the topics that we want to be sure that we identify for all of us to look at and then discuss.
I think I have more on my list to watch. I mean, the ones that I have watched were great. And I don't want to like say, oh, let's do those because I haven't watched those other ones.
Okay, well, we we can move it forward to December or January and then have it for some of our spring um study sessions.
They're available.
Our winter.
They're available through July is my understanding.
Yeah.
If maybe in December, we each brought one forward that we thought would be good for discussion. Then it would give us through the holidays to watch them since we won't be having like board meeting at the end of December and
Yeah. Sounds good. All right. The next series of items on the agenda is our opportunity to share additional things if we have anything to share. So um, anything else to share? I'll I'll lead, open it up to the school board, student school board members. Anything else to share? All right.
Um, sorry.
Oh, good.
So, um, sorry, I write down stuff, so I'm looking at it. Okay, so just letting you all know that starting on December third, the FHS Mess or the Mental Health Club is hosting like community night lineups. They're going to be on Zoom. Um, the first one starts with DV SASS for No Community Coalition, which will begin at five thirty PM. Um, if you want the links, you can always go to the FHS Mental Health Club page on Instagram. They also have a lot of resources on that Instagram page, so if you haven't looked at it, I would. Um, it's a great page. Um, also, FHS Leadership is putting on a drive for the homeless. So if you do want to donate something, you can reach out to leadership to have a student come and get the supplies from you or if you want to make another arrangement. Just so you know, as of now, in Watkins County, the most needed supplies are sleeping bags, tents, warm coats and socks, um, any clothing items such as sap, or as always, you can donate to the um food drive. And yeah, the, going back to what Ms. Britt said, yeah, there were student workshops, um, and some of them revolved around like Western, learning about college, healthcare careers and writing opportunities and other things. Um, it was a great opportunity and I really appreciated the workshop and I know some other students did as well. Um, so Thanksgiving break is coming up, so I'm going to end off with just saying that I'm thankful for the board, um, obviously. And thankful for you guys, um, allowing Kong and I to be here and allowing student voices to be uplifted. Um, and I'm, I've learned a lot from the meetings, so I'm very thankful for that, that I can answer student questions and that I've become much more involved in the community. Um, yeah, and I'm just thankful for all the conferences, all the experiences that have been created and memories. So um, thank you guys and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Um, I think I have some notes on some things. Um, mostly everything I need have already said. So I'm not going to repeat them. Um, so personally, this year I've been involved in clubs, more clubs than I did last year. I've been joining like two, three clubs and it's been taking out a lot of my times. Um, next thing, oh, you can see my background. I've been like putting up some like classroom fees or empty classroom because I'm the only one here. A lot of like, um, whenever I go on Zoom, he people keep asking me like, what is that on the background? I was like, well, I'm here in school, so it's cool. Um, next thing, um, I want to talk about, um, for like the last meeting, I was about to talk about how um the process of online school and physicals or hybrid school. I feel like for online school, um, one of the good thing about it is that for me, it's allowed me, uh, it's allowed me to wake up later on and my own schedule of how things goes. Instead of like me waking up every morning, walking into the cold to go to school at like seven AM. And also, one question that I have was, I remember, I think there was some talk about there was supposed to be a test somewhere last year for the um sophomores. But they never had it, so I'm also also wondering this year for like the SAT and then S like the SAT, if that's still gonna happen.
The SAT will happen, Kong. We're still waiting to see whether the state mandated tests, the ones that we called the SBACK, the Smarter Balance Test, we still don't know if those are going to happen. But the SAT and the ACT and those college entrance tests, we'll figure out how the the, for sure, those will happen.
Yeah, that's all I have. Yeah, and also I want to be at Thanksgiving. I also want to thank Stephanie because she's been helping me a lot, like learning all this stuff about the school board. And I've been texting her about stuff like, wait, when is this? When is that? So, um, and also I want to thank everyone on the board for giving me the opportunity to be here and giving the student a voice. Yeah.
It's our pleasure. Thank you. All right, um, I will move on to the board members. Anything else to share? All right.
I got one.
Oh, way to go.
Um, in in the theme of thankfulness, uh, with the levy passing, just thankful for the community of Ferndale and um that not just the school district, but also all the people that live in the school district. So whether you have kids in school or you don't have kids in school, um, but just the support of of the community for passing the levy is extremely thankful for that, so.
And Melinda, it's appropriate because it's certified today.
Oh, great. Yay.
Is, it's in the bag.
A totally like different, kind of more of a personal note of civic pride. So my son, um, you guys might know him. He was a twenty nineteen graduate, uh, Guyan cool. He's an art guy and he made a design for my younger son of the of Ferndale. Because Guyan, or I'm sorry, Owen was supposed to be on a student exchange this year, supposed to bring some stuff that showed Ferndale. So we had pins made and those pins were fun, but yeah. Somebody had said, you know, I'll get some stickers made. I was like, oh, I don't know about stickers. Well, I got some stickers made. Um, Rockwood Realty actually bought them because they were kind of spendy. Um, but then just today I got an email that there was a sale on them, so I got to buy more of them. But that was designed by
Oh.
my older son, Guyan, and it's got a sun and a moon, which is like an O and a C for Owen Cool. And then you got the bridge with Ferndale, Washington, USA, and then really small there.
Metallica.
Of course.
Because when he was going to be exchanging these sorts of things, we didn't want people to be like, oh, a Metallica pin or a Metallica sticker. So if you live in Ferndale, you know it's the Metallica Bridge. But so now I might be like tossing these to people everywhere for your Ferndale sticker. And then also we are, um, they are, if you wanted to donate for them too, every penny is going to the Ferndale Food Bank. So our family likes to support the Ferndale Food Bank, so I say a little civic pride, helping the food bank.
Very nice. Thank you. I like my pin. Okay, so um, anyone else, board members, anything else to share? Okay, uh, Linda, anything from your shared out? And I will open it up to the exec team. Okay. Well, then the final items on the agenda are the consent agendas. Uh, the superintendent's consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for action, but requires board approval afterwards. Uh, the board's consent, the board's consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to address. We've already had a discussion about that we're going to pull out one item for discussion. And so we usually pull these two together and do them as one item on the agenda. So at this time, I'm going to open up a discussion, I'll turn it over to Melinda to um talk about uh the consent agenda item eight point one, which deals with the October twenty twenty fund balance and financial statements. So Melinda, would you start the discussion?
Okay, so Mark, you can um correct me uh on this if I get anything wrong because I've had nine hours or three sessions of budget work, more than that. But anyway, okay, so our fund balance, that's the money that we start with at the beginning of the year. It's kind of like your your minimum level. And then it goes up through the year, like in October, we get levy money and it goes way up. And then we kind of work off of that. And then April, we get levy money because property taxes and it goes up and then we work off that. And if you look on, in the uh attachment that's in eight point one zero, if you look at this exhibit one, I think it's on the second page, um, the green line is twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And our fund balance started at a little over fourteen million. Um, at the end of August, and right now it's right at about seventeen million. Which I know in the past, some people have said like, my gosh, you have such a high fund balance. Why is the fund balance so high? And we've talked about, well, it was high because if the bond hadn't passed, we would have had to have made major fixes in the high school, so we would have needed that money. Now it's very high. And if you look at the pink line, the orange line and the blue line from the other years previous where we were collecting at either two fifty or two seventeen or what have you um levels. I'd like Mark to kind of explain what's going to happen with that green line. Are we going to stay at that elevated level the rest of this year? Or is it going to make some drastic changes, which I just want Mark to educate us and the public on that?
So, the uh, since you were kind enough to ask me that question in advance, I um prepared a uh graphic. Um, and this is by no means the um exact way things are going to turn out. Uh, but this is probably a closer representation of kind of what we're expecting to have happen than what the, what the current um uh uh kind of charts look like. So if you look at, you everybody can see the chart, right? Yes, okay. Um, and Kong, you jump in here if if you uh hear something you uh, now that you're a a budget expert as well. I'm so excited. I'm just giddy with delight that you guys are all getting into the joy of finances. So, things are going to get a lot more interesting. So, anyway, so you can see the the kind of where we're at, the with the with the peak up here at the at the seventeen point. Because you're exactly right, we collected our um, the last of the two seventeen levy revenue. Okay, so that's our typical levy bump. Now, what is happening here, you can see this really large drop from uh in January. And that is where the state, where we're going to get adjusted for over, uh, the state is basically over apportioned us uh because of our enrollment decrease, right? So we, we, the first part of the year, the September, October, November, December, we get paid our state apportionment based on our budget. And our budget was based on a higher enrollment number. So, once the January hits and the state says, hey, wait a minute, you guys, we paid you um, for three hundred students more than you actually have, we're taking that money back. So they are not going to, they're going to basically shorten our apportionment in January. So that's why you see the first, the first big drop. Um, we also budgeted at a deficit. We were planning on budgeting, we spending fund balance. We are using the savings account to make uh entropy, but then that continues uh to drop. Um, kind of that February, March, where typically we would see kind of a flat or a slight increase until we collect the second half tax payments. Thank goodness, then you see in April, we get that bump from the dollar fifty levy that was just passed, which is fantastic because if we didn't have that little bump, you could see kind of the trajectory um, that that uh that green line would take uh without that little increase. So, you know, we're we're planning on on uh uh cutting into that uh amount, uh basically about half. I mean, we're we're going from, you know, seventeen million now to probably closer to about nine um, is where that line is right now um at the end of the year. This was kind of a quick analysis. It wasn't, I I wouldn't say, you know, take this to the bank as the final number. But the trend line is going to be pretty close to, um, you know, it's going to be heading this direction. It's going to be uh probably a lot more representative than um uh the other lines at this point. So is that, is that uh what you were looking for, Melinda? Is that uh?
Yes, exactly, because then, I mean, like looking way ahead because that's what we should do as school board. If we think of financial year twenty twenty-one, you would take that green dot in August of twenty twenty and put it as as your start button. So it'd be just under where the blue line is.
Right.
And then it's going to next year also probably be on the same overall downward trajectory because we're collecting at the dollar fifty rate. Is that right?
Well, that'll be a decision that we make. Um, so if
But our levy is for two years.
Right, but it it'll depend on how we build the budget. So this, this year, we planned on, I mean, we built a budget where we were dipping into fund balance and intentionally dipping into it fairly significantly. So, the the number, the 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 starting point and the ending point um may be fairly flat. If you look at, you know, the other years, there's, you you know, up or down slightly. Um, and that could be the case. If we intentionally build a budget that we're continuing to spend down fund balance, then yeah, that that ending number is going to be lower than the beginning number. But our option in building the budget is we can basically say we're not going to spend more than what the revenue is. So we can control the expenditures at the beginning of the budget cycle um to maintain that, you know, that that fund balance if we so choose. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. It make, I mean, if you're going to build a budget that spends less of the fund balance, that that would be building a budget that has more cuts than we had, there would be more cuts again.
It would be, we would have to, we would have to continue to trim a little bit, yes. It probably wouldn't be as as substantial in terms of reductions as as we did um this year. But yes, there would be um some further reductions.
So I think starting to like, think about that, like what is our vision? What, because there was, in one of the um sessions I went to, they said the board can set where the goal is. And if we set goals that are too high, that cannot be ma- met with the funds that we have avail- available, that's not fair. Um, and also we'd be civilly liable for that as well. So just thinking about like, what are our goals going to be? How are we going to build a budget? And then on top of that too, it's a what, year from February that the next levy would be on the ballot. Not that anybody wants to hear the word levy again, um, especially right now. But it's not that much time to start to think about how we're going to do stuff. So that's enough discussion for me. I don't know if anybody has, um.
I just want to tie this one. Oh, go ahead, Kevin. I'm sorry.
No, um, I think it's also important to note, maybe you were going to mention this, Mark, that part of that fund balance is restricted because it was set aside for certain projects or things, you know, so that, you know, if if the projection there is right, that nine million that we have at the end isn't all available for programs. Plus, we need to have something for a rainy day. COVID kind of is a rainy day, but um, but that isn't all available because there are, you know, some of it is designated.
Yeah, that's a, that's a absolutely, that's a great point. That's a great point. And what I was going to add to is that the kind of the, one of the things that you said, that you, the third conference that you went to um, is actually probably the most exciting to me because that's the the direction we've been trying to head um, the last couple of years with the district budget, um, to make sure the expenditures are aligned with um the board goals, right? The the guiding principles. And that is where those decisions have to be made. So as we start into the budget conversations here, just this next month, and start digging into that and deciding what are our goals, what are we going to spend the money on and how aggressively are we going to pursue those, um, all that's going to get fleshed out.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions for Mark or Melinda? You're you're good? That was a great discussion. It's always good to see it in a visual format, so it's helpful. Thank you, Mark.
You bet. You bet.
Okay.
I'll unshare.
Okay.
Just, there we go.
Okay, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agendas as attached.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas as attached and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it has been moved to approve both the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda as attached here too, and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So the motion is approved. Well, it is eight thirty, and we've actually reached the end of our agenda for tonight. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December fifteenth. Please note that December is the one exception to our um, meeting schedule for the last Tuesday of every month. In December, we meet on the last Tuesday before school dismissal for winter break. So thank you all for your participation this evening, and I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.